Well, I like stevia.
We want to do this on today.
Honey.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, January 9th. It's about 7:37 or so, according to that clock. 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed quite a few things, including school resource officer agreement. I clearly did not get the memo tonight. Where apparently it's sweater night at Village Hall. Had I known, I would have worn a sweater as well.
I would like to make a motion that every night it is sweater night.
I don't know about July.
I'm wearing a jacket.
This is our storm gear. This is our storm central.
This is how we're dressed as we are prepared for a storm. And actually, before we begin, I do want to thank our highway crew who has been out preparing for this storm. We've been clearing storm drains, getting everything ready. And also for our police and fire who are on call during the night. Hopefully, we don't get hit badly. But we want to thank everyone who's been out there and will be out there keeping our residents safe.
I must tell you, I was in the city this weekend, nothing. I'm driving on Sunday night up the hutch. No snow, no snow, no snow, no snow, no snow. Get off exit 18, I'm in Siberia.
We're at another, it is where it starts.
I don't understand who we ticked off. But we ticked off somebody that we got started. There was not one flake on the ground all the way up the hutch.
Until you get to Rybrook. But I would say that even during that storm, it may have been all over the place. It was not on the roads. The roads in Rybrook were in great shape. All right, so moving into our meeting, we are going to start with resolution number one. Considering a request for an exemption extension of chapter 158, section 2.1 of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for George Comfort &amp; Sons.
Whereas on April 11th of 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st to September 30th, effective May 1st of this year. And whereas, in accordance with the village code, properties with at least five acres of property can apply to the village board for a full or partial extension or exemption of the local law. And whereas an application has been distributed to eligible properties in the village of Rybrook can also be placed on its website. And whereas, as of on December 11th, 2023, representatives of George Comfort &amp; Sons submitted an application for exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers at 900 and 1100 King Street properties. Now therefore be it resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law as well as the considerations raised in the application from George Comfort &amp; Sons, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an extension or exemption of the village code enacting the seasonal leaf blower ban.
Thank you, Chris, and we'll hold off on the motion in second until we figure this one out. I believe we have a representative from Palata Landscaping here. If you could please introduce yourself. Let us know your thoughts.
My name is Matthew DeFabio. I'm a manager at Palata Landscaping. And thank you for taking the time to hear me today. We do maintain the properties of 900 and 1100 King Street. And not only are we responsible for keeping the property clean and looking pretty, but we're also responsible for keeping the property safe for all the tenants and the people who constantly visit those locations. There's six buildings on the property. It's a very large property. It's pretty far away from any residential areas. And with implementing this blower ban, we will not be able to efficiently take care of the property. As we know, the battery-powered blowers are not as strong. They don't last as long. And they're much more expensive than using the gas-powered blowers. So in order for us to maintain safety for the tenants and it does bring health concerns if the place is not properly kept and not properly cleaned. You can attract rodents and things like that to the property if it's not done properly. And then also, we're just looking in the best interests of our customer to try to keep the cost down. The battery blowers do cost a lot more money than the gas-powered blowers. And it takes a longer time for us to maintain the property if we do go the route of using the battery-powered blowers. So it will increase the cost significantly for our customer. So if you could give us an exemption or if we can work to some sort of agreement to help us better provide a service to our customer, that would be greatly appreciated.
Couple of quick questions. One, are you using any electric leaf blowers or none at all?
We do use electric leaf blowers when we can, especially around the buildings. But sometimes when there's wet weather or if it's a drought, the leaves on the trees, they come down early or they'll come down during the summer if it's a drought. So when it is wet conditions or if there's excess amount of debris around, it would just take us longer and it'd be more difficult to clean the property.
And are you just blowing the hardscapes there? I mean, I know during the leaf season, you're probably blowing everything off of the... But I mean, are you, after you're mowing the lawn areas, are you blowing trimmings or you just?
Well, so the lawn areas, they're usually mulched with the lawn mowers. So that's not really a concern. But it's mostly the walkways and the parking lots that are the concern. Because that's where the people are walking. That's where people park their cars to try to get to the building. So we do minimal around on the lawn areas.
Right.
Where the people will be walking, it's a big concern, especially if it's wet outside.
Gotcha.
Just to remind you, the leaf season, it's allowed. So in other words, during the leaf season, you can blow the leaves, you can clear off the parking lot. So we're talking about the timeframe between May 1st and September 30th. And so what type of stuff? Maybe you can describe a little about what's on the parking lots that you're clearing off.
Yeah, so when there is a drought, if we have an extended period of no raining, the trees will drop their leaves significantly too, depending on the type of tree it is. So that can become an issue during that time slot. As you guys, I don't know if you remember or not, but this past fall, all the leaves dropped really early. They actually started dropping the end of September. So it became a little bit of a nuisance for us. And then not to mention any of the garbage, debris left behind by people going there, blowing from trash cans and stuff like that. So in order to keep the place tidy and safe and if there is a lot of buildup of leaves around the buildings, you can attract rodents, which is a big health concern.
Questions?
No, I was just wondering how much of this work is being done at 900?
At 900, it's also at 900, maybe not as much. But 111 is the biggest concern.
That's what I would have assumed.
Are you responsible for the Sun Homes property or just the road leading to it?
Just the road leading to it. It ends, I guess, the center island that's there. It ends right at the center island.
Okay, there's no, okay.
Right, nothing inside the...
Nothing.
Nothing inside there. They're probably private.
We've had other people say that they are moving towards it and would go low throttle.
Right. Yeah, we do have, I mean, this is, I mean, one of the things that says in our back of materials is that you're now our 10th application that we've seen. And, you know, a lot of, and really, you know, the going trend in this municipality and others is starting to move towards electric. You know, and so I think, you know, I can't say anything, you know. Personally, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, personally, I'm inclined to approve a one-year extension, or exemption, that is, for this, you know, for this property. And which is typically what we've been doing unless someone's been making major strides towards moving towards electric. And I would say that if we do grant this exemption, I think it would behoove you to start moving towards that, especially on the hardscapes around the buildings. Because I think a year from now, it may be a different scenario when a lot of the other applicants are coming in and saying, well, we've really started to move towards electric. Because that is happening in a lot of other municipalities around here. So, you know, I think it is, it really is the trend. And we understand that technology takes a little while to catch up. We feel that it is, especially if you're talking about minimal grass clippings and leaves around hardscapes in the middle of summer. You know, we understand that if there's a significant windstorm during a drought, leaves are going to fall. There may be a need for some of those gas-powered leaf blowers. But I think, you know, for most of what's being done, you know, especially like you said, around the buildings, hardscapes, you know, you can get a lot done with the electric there.
I was just going to say, this initial request for an exemption, I can feel some sympathy for it. But a year from now, when you've had a year to start preparing for what the new law says, I'm going to have much less sympathy.
I would like to see the technology actually improve. It is a good thing moving forward, but I don't think the technology has caught up yet. I think it will take some time to get there. And by all means, once those electric blowers become as powerful as the gas-powered blowers, I would be all for it. I'd be first in line. And, I mean, we do have electric blowers. So it's not something that we're not familiar with. We do deal with it in other towns. But on a larger scale, property is when it becomes a problem.
My suggestion is, as you buy new blowers, make sure they're electric.
Yeah, except for the fall. Because you can't, you cannot do a fall cleanup.
I understand Amila's saying a year from now, you will not have as much sympathy for me as you have now.
What other towns are you servicing currently?
We service a lot of Westchester. So we're familiar with the band in Pleasantville, Chappaqua.
And how are you handling those towns?
We don't have large properties like these properties here in Rybrook, in those towns, so we can get away with it. It's not easy, but we do the best we can with what we can. And obviously, I understand the time period, which is fine. And it works with us a lot. But on these bigger properties, in order to have these machines run like we need them to run, they just don't have the longevity on the batteries. And even if you have interchangeable batteries, it's very difficult when you're running out of a truck because you have to run a generator in order to charge the batteries. And to have those batteries as backup, believe it or not, the batteries cost just as much, if not more than the machine.
Out of curiosity, about how much time do you think you spend at, you know, 1100 King? And how often?
It takes us about two days to, two to three days to do, depending on weather.
Full day, so you're there during the day?
Maintain, maintain, not blowing the whole time.
Right, right, mowing.
Mowing, trimming, maintenance, beautifying, mulch, flowers, stuff like that.
Gotcha. All right. So, yeah, again, I think, I think we probably, you know, have, we'll put in, I think, one year?
Right, with a, I think we have to send out and remind your letters to everybody.
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, you'll probably, now reading the board, I'd say you probably get a one-year exemption. And I would, I would say it would be in your best benefit to make strides towards getting more electric or at least committing to more electric use during that off-season, during that May through September season, if you're going to go for another exemption next year.
We also had other people commit to lower throttle.
Yeah, that's true. We have had some.
We had it with a lot of them.
Say that they'll go lower throttle in certain areas, you know, or commit to electric use in the hardscapes around the buildings, so.
I mean, I would love to use electric when I can, but there are times within that period that I may need to use the gas power. But we can definitely do it at a lower throttle to keep the noise down.
Right, that's the idea. The idea was to keep noise pollution and emissions. Great.
All right, so can I get a motion in second for a one-year exemption, please?
So move with what he said, though.
With adding in, you're okay with us adding in to the resolution that we're going to?
Except for when it like rains is the biggest concern because everything gets heavy, so we may have to.
Right, understandable.
Right, yeah.
But for the most part, yes, we can low throttle.
Weather dependent.
I looked over to Chris.
Weather dependent.
I mean, listen, we know that there's going to be some good faith in some of that as well, the throttling. But I think what we're doing is we're just reading the last sentence. It's just last paragraph. It's just, now therefore be it resolved after consideration of the intent of the law and the application from George Comfort &amp; Sons, the Board of Trustees hereby approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the village code enacting the leaf blower ban and be further resolved that the condition is that it's a one year, it's an exemption for one year and that they shall be operated at low throttle. Lower throttle?
Periodically.
I'll just say low throttle. It's the intent.
Sound good?
Excellent.
Okay. So can I have a motion in second, please?
So move?
Second.
Yes.
Give me a second. Trustee Epstein? Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
I think I'm going to go slow on this. Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
All right, resolution number two. Considering the installation of EV chargers at Village Hall and Garibaldi Parking Lot.
Okay, whereas Westchester County is coordinating the installation of FlowCore Level 2 electric vehicle chargers available to the public on municipal properties through an awarded contract with Sourcewell. And whereas INF Associates is a turnkey energy solutions company that is coordinating the scope of work for the installation of these chargers with the municipalities in the county. And whereas INF Associates has submitted an electric vehicle charging proposal, and I'm just going to modify what is recommended, which is four dual-port charging stations, eight ports total at Village Hall. And they've also submitted a proposal for two dual-port charging stations, four ports total at Garibaldi, the Garibaldi Municipal Lot of Garibaldi Place. And whereas due to various incentive rebates, tax credits and grants available, the result is no cost to the participating municipality for the installation of the chargers recommended in the proposals. And whereas the village board will be able to determine any fees for the public use of these chargers, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the existing proposals for the installation of FlowCore Level 2 electric vehicle chargers at the vehicle Village Hall Parking Lot at 938 King Street and the Garibaldi Park Municipal Lot of Garibaldi Place. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any applications or documents as may be modified by council that are necessary or appropriate to enact the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
So move second.
All right, Chris, a little background, please?
Yeah, so we've been spending a lot of time and we're down to the deadline, which has to be submitted by Friday. It's been a lot of back.
I didn't realize it was that close.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, the board had asked us to review some of the, you know, Level 2 versus Level 3 chargers and some of the costs. So, you know, it's taken them a long time to get the proposals and the price and to go back and forth. So what we're recommending is at Village, so the transit and Level 3s are just cost prohibitive, you know, just be too much. And you see, we've given up some spreadsheets showing some of the costs, which is pretty considerable. And these aren't, this is not budget money either. And in researching it, everybody's recommending that Level 2s is what, pretty the standard out there for everyone because most people are going and topping off. They're not spending the time to, they have them at their houses. They're doing the overnights. And it's really about just topping off at the locations. The proposal, as proposed to the board now, the Level 2 chargers to have four dual-port chargers at Village Hall, which is eight ports total, and two dual-port chargers down at the Garibaldi Parking Lot, which is four ports total, there's no cost. And that's, so that's, it's combining a various rebates plus accounting incentive. And that allows to get this decent place, have infrastructure in place, and includes the installation. And then the village board will have the authority to charge whatever rate you find appropriate for the use of those chargers. Some municipalities do nothing. Some municipalities charge extra. You know, and it's all something that the board can decide at a later date.
Are the L3s the high-speed chargers?
Yes.
So the issue is, I understand it's going to cost us more, so it's not worth it, et cetera. But is it possible to make sure that at some points there may be a way to upgrade?
We did try that too.
Also, the service.
We did try doing it. We tried saying, well, can you lay the infrastructure for it? And they couldn't, they were giving us some of the, some of the costs we were getting is, it was astronomical. I mean, that's what we're looking at here. That's what we were trying to do. I mean, you see.
Don't understand. It's like, it's counterintuitive.
I guess, you know, and who knows what the technology will be too, down down the road.
Right, it's all about the electrical, isn't it?
Something completely different, right? Yeah, it's the size of the electrical, it's the size. What happens is you start to get into a period where you're, you have to do the panel upgrades, right, Michael? Michael, if you want to come up and kind of speak more, Michael can speak more to the power part of it. We've tried to also, we also looked at Pine Ridge Park and we looked at the highway garage. And both, the highway garage would have been a whole other upgrade on power. And Pine Ridge Park, the run, we ran into this last time too, the run's just too long.
Too long.
And you couldn't do it.
You have to do it by the street and you can't do it at the street.
It'd be tough, yeah. So it would cost you a lot to run it all the way into the parking lot.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So at the moment, we explored the hope of putting in the Level 3s, but as mentioned, the cost was just astronomical. And the issue comes in that we currently have 250 amps of available power in our panel. So without upgrading the entire switchgear, which would be upwards of $5,000 to $10,000 just for the switch itself, plus the labor, plus the increase in component cost for the Level 3 chargers. I believe the component cost was like $20,000 something thousand upgrade. I think in their.
We're talking about a couple hundred thousand here. This is.
So we're looking at about a $50,000 cost per unit just for the Level 3s alone, not even including infrastructure upgrades. And the thought behind that was that, that how many persons actually come here and are going to be topping off from 18%, 25% to go to 100 to carry on in their journey? Because we asked that same question. Doesn't make sense. And the consensus was that it doesn't make sense because A, there's a bunch of L3 chargers just a quarter mile up the road, which is fine. But for the purposes of the building, people aren't necessarily coming here to do that high-speed charge. The technology's changing. The batteries are changing as time goes on. So Level 3 chargers may not be the best choice. And to run that wiring right now, they cannot do under the grant proposal because L3 chargers are not part of the grant, so they're not covered. So to shell out that money.
No, no, I concur.
Some of the rebates were available, but not all of them. And that's why you see some of the costs that are there. They range from each location from, what, 68 to 138 or on the option B.
Crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy. So they said, the people you'd be getting to that would mostly be people coming off the highway. And most of them probably wouldn't do that because they'd just stop at the rest area, you know, and do it there.
The rest area on the hutch just north of us, those are the L3 chargers?
Yes.
Those are Level 3s.
And are they building Summit Mobile? The ones that they're redoing at 25?
I don't know.
Possibly, I don't know.
But you'd be getting, and that's what they're saying, is probably the more common users of that would be the people traveling on highways.
Yeah.
So we did try to look at, but this will get us the infrastructure and allow us to get it in place. And there's no cost to the village. And we'd have basically eight ports here and four ports down at Garibaldi.
Right, at no cost, which is phenomenal and that's great. My only concern is, are we going to be limiting those spots to?
We talked it out. They have to be available to the public, but they don't have to be exclusive to EV users.
Gotcha, okay. I'm just thinking, you know, on nights like this where there's a huge crowd in the audience.
So, you know, it's a board policy question, but you're just, the only requirement is that they have to be available to the public. So in other words, you can't say, this is only for employees, that kind of thing. So as long as they're available, they don't, but they do not have to be exclusive. That's a board choice.
Okay, okay, so we may determine that there's certain times when we.
You could.
And when we do that and certain times.
We see if it's a problem. Maybe just let it go and see if there's.
And see if it's an issue.
If people say, there's no spaces for my charger.
Right, I mean, it's very rare that I think all the spaces are taken out there, but it does occasionally happen.
And what we're thinking is, we were going to balance out four and four. So four in the lot here.
Here.
And then four, four ports, which is two duals.
Right, so four spots here, four spots there.
And then right next to it, on the other side, in the upper lot part, right next to it, because it has to be close to each other to keep the cost down.
Okay, so farther that way and farther this way.
It'd be like right next to each other with the grass in between.
Right.
Yep.
They're going to be right next to each other. And there's an island in the middle. There's a light there.
Right.
So it actually makes sense to split them on either side of the light. A, you have illumination. B, you split them.
That makes sense.
So even if you had a higher usage, you could in essence allocate necessarily two or four spaces on the one side to, if the board wanted, to dedicate them for eight to five usage or whatever.
I remember in Garibaldi, we actually have the overnight permits too, so people may want to do that.
Right, that's true. They may, they may plug them in.
Has there been any vandalism with L2 ports anywhere? That's my.
Not that I'm familiar with, but I'm.
Okay. I'm just in the firing because I wanted to know whether or not we have a.
We're also all camered here too.
I was going to say, we have a security camera. We have a security camera on it, right? That's my point.
Everything's camered here.
We added on to our insurance policy as municipal infrastructure as well.
Right, of course, but I'm more concerned with having a camera on it.
Everything's camered here.
Fabulous. So they know when I pack in.
Yeah, about that, we got to talk.
Oh, yes, okay.
All right.
Great. Thank you for doing some hard work on it.
I mean, this, this sounds, I mean, I know, and I guess I'm not too surprised it's coming through the county. I know the county with its, anytime that the county's doing a capital project that involves a parking lot, they're making 10% of their lot. 10% of the spots have to be chargers.
Yep, and they're putting all LTs too.
And they're putting them, yeah, and they're, and it's good that they're funding municipalities.
Yeah, they're doing like 50% of the unit cost, I think.
Correct, and then the others coming from the rebates.
The other rebates.
The rebates, so, I mean, I think this is a step in the right direction and no cost to the village.
Yeah, it's a win-win. Yeah, it's a win-win.
Something that's, yeah, it's a win-win, exactly.
Great, awesome. So, when does the, we move forward on this?
We have to sign, we have to send everything in by Friday.
Okay.
How long it'll take to install, we don't know, because it's all volume, they're doing it for all the municipalities. That's the same deadline for everybody.
Right, okay.
Right. All right, any other questions, concerns? All right, do we have a motion in second? Okay, thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser? Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Do I need to sign this before Friday?
Greg will check it, Greg will check it.
Okay, good, okay.
It's more like an application and intent, it's, I don't think, it's not like a formal agreement, big long form of.
Gotcha, okay. Because I was gonna say, if I do, then I may have to, you may have to be brought to be at WMLA.
We all know how to spell Jason Klein.
Right, there we go, right. My signature's easy to put.
Not a problem.
There we go.
If that is the case, I will try to.
All right, all right, resolu, moving on, resolution number three, considering setting a public hearing for a proposed local law amending chapter 240 of the village code regarding the removal of illegally parked cars in the Garibaldi parking lot and the Hillendale parking lot.
Now, therefore be resolved that the board of trustees shall hold the public hearing on Tuesday, January 23rd, on the proposed local law amending chapter 240, authorizing the removal of illegally parked cars in the Garibaldi parking lot and the Hillendale parking lot.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in second, please?
Some moves?
Second.
I, I feel like, I mean, we're just setting the public hearing, but.
Yeah, it's, uh, these are the permitted spaces and people are parking in the permitted spaces and we can't do anything about it because it's not in the street area.
Right, because we don't have a local law.
We don't have a law that they can enforce.
So, you can't put one of those signs that said you will be towed if you.
There will be.
Well, there will be now.
Should we put a sign on there saying you're parked illegally? Have we tried that?
Well, we could.
Police too, but in the meantime, people have no place to park.
You can say parking by permit only at night, but we don't have a law.
We have a sign that just says permit park, we have all the sign in the job showing that it's permit parking.
We don't have the means to enforce it.
But people are still parking there.
Because they know it's not enforceable.
I don't know if that's why, but, or they just pay.
They'll, they'll stop, they'll stop parking there once we start towing them.
So, this came up through the police department, came, they brought to our attention.
I think that we should be warning these people.
We do, we give them tickets, like, or we try to give them tickets, we want to give them tickets, that's what we want to do, but we can't.
This is how we got to this point.
Got it.
Everything we've done has not.
Yeah.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
So, it's time.
We're at last resort.
Essentially, pretty much.
I got it.
Do we keep track of who they are?
It's only one or two cars.
It's all people in the neighborhood, I mean, it's all people live right there.
It's covered in snow, so.
Or they just park it there and leave it there?
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's, so, you know, it's been, you know, covered in snow, they didn't even clean the snow off it, who even knows if the car starts?
Could be abandoned.
All right.
All right.
Other questions, comments?
Before we tow it, we'll actually put a sticker on the window, let them know that in X number of hours this car will be towed, usually in 48 hours.
Fabulous, I just want to make sure we.
Oh, the big orange one?
Yeah, the thing, the cars aren't moving in 48 hours will be towed.
Right, I love it.
And again, we're not, we're just setting the public hearing here.
Got it.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser? Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering a hold harmless agreement between the village of Rybrook and Dan Zoo to maintain existing structures in a village drainage easement.
Whereas the village of Rybrook has an existing drainage easement, drainage easement at Five Deer Lane, right, Deer Lane?
Deer Run.
Deer Run, yeah, I was like, wait, that doesn't sound right. Um, and whereas the existing.
Few times there is.
Yeah, whereas the existing drainage easement at Five Deer Run has existing structures, including an outdoor barbecue, kitchen, deck steps, koi pond, retaining wall, chain link fence and stockade fence, and whereas the owner of Five Deer Run, Dan Zoo, wishes to maintain the existing structures in the drainage easement, and whereas the village of Rybrook wishes to enter into a hold harmless agreement with Dan Zoo to allow existing structures to remain in the easement while holding harmless and indemnifying the village, its officers, agents, contractors and employees from and against all claims of liability for loss due to the damage to the premises or any injury or death to any and all persons that may be occasioned by the location. Now, therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the hold harmless agreement with Dan Zoo of Five Deer Run to hold harmless and indemnify the village and everybody mentioned before, and be further resolved that the mayor and administrator hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in second, please?
I have a second.
So, I, I mean, I have a, a lot of questions with this one, like, so, so.
What happened here?
When did the easement, when did the easement occur and how, how, I mean, I'm assuming that these were built with building permits?
Koi ponds and others, I don't know, some of it should have, it should have been, but I don't know, I'm gonna ask Michael to help me out on this one, because I don't have all the details.
His name is spelled differently in different places.
Well, I can tell you, so the concept, the concept of the license agreements, we do a lot, we've done that over the years, we haven't done it over a while, but we were doing them for a long time. It's usually a fence, it's something else that's in it, and it's in, and it's basically when they usually are just over the line and they've installed it like off the line and something off the line and it's into the public right away.
From a tree, we've seen it.
It's definitely unusual to see this amount of stuff, you know, in the public property.
It's not like he did this yesterday, it's obviously been there for like.
So, now I'm pumping, punting to Michael who has more information.
All right, Michael.
The building was built a number of years ago and there's about a dozen houses in that area, and obviously there's two easements there, there's one for sewer, one for drain line, and this particular applicant, I believe, filed for a building permit for some additional work recently, at which point it was revealed that the impervious coverage numbers were high and went to go get a variance and things were revealed that certain things were built and there's no record of them, and here we are, and certain things are built over the easement, over the sewer easement, like, I believe, koi pond, I think there's a pizza oven, there's a patio area, I mean, a few number of improvements that are not, you know, not technically supposed to be there, and it poses an issue if something happens and the line's gotta get worked on, there's a little bit of an issue.
You need access.
And that's what this agreement aims to help, and this also aims to legalize what is there and the fact that it's over the village's easement, so.
And it looks like it's to the back of the property, the side and the back.
So, all of this is to, if you're facing the house to the back left side of the property, if I recall.
Did he know that there was an easement or did anybody know, or?
Can't answer that.
Well, clearly it was built without applying for permits, so.
But, but he's a new owner.
Was there any fine given out for building our permits?
He's a new owner.
I don't know when the fences were built, maybe they were done before, I don't know.
New owner, so the title company should have found this.
He's a new owner?
I don't believe he's a long-term owner, Five Deer Run.
I can't speak on behalf of.
Didn't get all this information, Michael, go back.
That was my building inspector.
If you like, so here's the choices, if the board would like more information, like, does he have permits on the fencing, then we could put this on the next agenda and get that information for you.
I think it's more than the fencing.
Well, the koi pond wouldn't need a permit, right, the.
Well, you don't need a permit for a koi pond?
Depends how big it is, I guess.
Yeah, but wouldn't you need a permit if you're, when you're adding that much impervious? Don't you, I mean.
We pick it up on an application, right, so you wouldn't make an application for a koi pond, you, barbecue depends on how big, I don't know, is this like a big structure?
Yeah, everything there's impervious, the decks, stairs.
We don't know if he bought the house like that or if he was.
I don't know.
We can get more information if the board would like from the building, that's from the building department, just everyone here, we don't know.
I gave him the backend of this application.
Well, we get more information and bring it back, because nothing is changing right now.
Sure.
Yeah, nothing's changed, I mean, it's.
It's been there for how long, we can just, uh, nothing can't wait another two weeks.
And so, basically, this is saying, so that it's, so just reading into this again, if there's, if there's an issue with the drainage and it's on an easement, crew needs to get in there and fix this.
Then we have the right to move it.
Then we basically have.
We have the right to tear it up.
Tear it up, okay.
Correct.
That's what we have to do.
At no expense to the village.
At no expense to the village, right, right, that we don't owe, we don't owe anything for this.
What about the fish, you gotta save the fish.
We'll save the fish.
To five gallon buckets of fish.
Well, I was gonna say, the little baggies that they come. Everyone's seeing Nemo.
Would you rather us get the information or bring it back?
What do we think?
I, I would like more information, I'm also concerned about the presidential value of something like this. Are we setting a precedent or somebody just builds on the easement, doesn't tell anybody, and then, oh, we'll give you a hold harmless clause?
We, we've done probably 20 of them over the years, but.
Yes.
But not this much.
Yeah, not this mu, I mean, I remember at least four or five and they were all.
Had front, uh, steps, remember there was, there was one that was steps coming out that were in our.
The steps.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, most of them are, you know, they, they move the fence three feet this way to avoid ripping up the tree, and, yeah, that's very different, this is very different. I think, I think we would like a little more information, Chris.
He's building a little village here.
Well, I want to, I want to, so the koi like barbecue, is that what it is? He's, he's made it for them?
Koi barbecue.
Koi barbecue.
The koi is barbecue?
Till they get big enough and then.
Serving the, the koi barbecue?
Stop shopping.
I think, I think we would like a little more information on, you know, whether this is a, whether this person bought the house in this condition.
Sure, we'll get more information.
And whether there were permits pulled on, on any of this, uh, I mean, this would, because you would think that if they were applying for permits, it would come up that it was in the easement, um, and there would be some kind of survey.
So, this house was just sold on 8/18/23.
There you go.
Oh, in August.
The guy just bought it in August. All right, well, whatever.
Would you like the resident, owner to come as well?
No, I mean.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's really, I don't think that's.
He obviously bought it and is going to do work.
Well, he bought it and he has it, so he's inheriting that.
The issue.
But he didn't know.
Well, no, I think we should find out.
But in that case, it goes back to first, it was the title company.
Yeah, that's right, he didn't build, if he purchased it, he didn't build it.
I'll just say, if he's available, the board may have additional questions, so.
His title company could be online.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, it just sold in August.
My question for Michael, are koi's good to be barbecued?
No, 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 no.
My question for Michael is how do I get a koi pond?
You apply for a permit.
Wait, are you getting exterior chickens?
Yeah.
Right, or make chickens.
Stephanie, first you have to find a village easement.
Nancy Gayle, she'll have to file for an exterior building permit, electrical permit, and we go from there.
Right, you think, I mean, I mean, right, an electrical, it's.
Wait, you need electricity in there for the?
Yeah, for the pumps.
To pump, to create the water and to keep the water.
Gotta be right out there, yeah?
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff here that's probably not kosher.
I wonder who lived there before?
Yeah.
That's, we gotta find out, who lived there before, who did all that.
Well, but, but you're right, I mean, that when they go to purchase the house.
And who didn't really turn, know that there was.
The title company should have, I mean, you do a survey.
I was gonna say, if they do a survey, they know this isn't their land.
Yeah, like.
Right. And also, just add, adding to that, just as, as a background information, I'm just curious when the easement was put in place.
Well, the easement was put in place when the development was built.
It's part of the development.
So, when the development was built.
Because of the sewer line, so it's not on, it's, it's not uncommon for older surveys or maps to not necessarily show an easement, I've seen that happen over the years.
This development isn't that old.
Much newer developments, so easements like this should not have been missed, and on a survey it's shown.
Right. They're past owners, I don't even know who they are.
But it's, that's an original easement of, of the development and subdivision.
Look, who is the real story?
We moved here in 89, we moved the houses that weren't built yet.
All right, well, all right, so let's, let's keep this, we'll put this on the next meeting, we'll put this on the next meeting agenda.
Sure.
I think this is a fair, I mean, it's not gonna, you know.
Ask the homeowner to attend.
I don't think we necessarily, I mean.
I don't think we need the homeowner to attend.
I don't think we need.
No, we need to better understand.
Unless the homeowner has questions for us.
The reason I'd like the homeowner is I'd like to know what his title company said to him.
That's what I mean, I think it'd be good to have it.
I know whose house this is.
To sell?
No.
All right, well, we're not gonna say it right now, we can talk about this after.
Jason, but I'd like to know if the homeowner.
Knowingly.
Title company did anything with him, or he just basically blew off the title company?
Or maybe didn't finance it, who knows?
But they had to have done a survey.
There's still, there would have been a survey.
They had to have done a survey.
Titles are, there has to be a title report.
Yeah.
Why don't we say, if you're available?
Yeah.
You may, there may be questions, but if not, it's okay.
Or can we just, can we ask that question of the homeowner?
Do you have a title report?
To find out whether the title company did a.
Yeah, we'd like to see that.
Report, we'd like to see. You might as well ask in advance.
You could ask them for the title report.
Yeah.
Let's get the title report.
But again, a lot of that'll come from building department also.
I, I believe their attorney has been in contact with Jennifer Gray from my office, so I can.
Yeah, they've been working together on this.
Yeah, so I can ask, I can ask Jennifer to, to see who, who would be a representative, who could come before the board, yeah.
Thank you.
And find out if koi's can be barbecued.
No, we don't need to find that out.
They're right there.
That's gross.
As pricey as Kobe beef.
Right, I don't think so.
If they end up having to get rid of their koi, I may be interested.
If you don't have a pond, what do you think?
All right, so we'll, we don't.
Next meeting.
We don't need any action on this, we'll, we'll.
Table it.
Table it till next, yeah, till the next meeting and see what more information we have. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to resolution number five, considering capital projects, transfer of funds, opening of capital projects and closing of capital projects.
Now, therefore be.
Little bit of everything.
Yeah, a little bit of everything. Now, therefore be resolved that the project balances remaining in the following MIS capital projects be transferred to the general fund and reappraisal, appropriated to the MIS contractual budget to fund the cost of additional IT support, and this is transfers basically from an IT capital to IT, um, IT operating. Now, therefore be resolved that the budget modifications for the capital fund and general fund be hereby approved, and these are transfers, interfund transfers from the general, um, general fund to MIS contractuals, just completing the tasks that are above. Be it further resolved, the following capital fund projects be established for fiscal year 23-24, and this is the Hillendale Road Drain Line Replacement, and another one is the NRCS Recovery Buyout Program, we need to establish an account for that program, and be not further, be further resolved that the capital project for the Hillendale Road Drain Line Replacement is funded by reallocation between capital projects as follows, and that's basically taking the drainage improvements on Lincoln Avenue and Law Ridge, the balance there, and transferring it to the Hillendale Road Drain Line Replacement, so we can do that work. And be it further resolved that the capital project for the NRCS Recovery Buyout is established to assist the village in the tracking and reporting of expenditures as part of the federal grant awarded to the village through the US Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources, Conservation Service, and that the expenditure payments are authorized to be advanced through the general fund and our capital fund, which will be reimbursed to the village 100% through this federal award. And be it further resolved, the following capital fund projects with zero remaining balance can be closed and removed from the length schedule, that's the IT server upgrade, the police desktops and laptop, and the drainage improvement on Lincoln and Law Ridge.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in second, please?
I have a second.
Well, among all of this, you know, it's, uh, it's great that we're now creating this capital.
Mm-hmm.
Fund for the NRCS.
Yeah, this is, uh, yep. We need an account to flow the money out of, advance from the general fund, flow it out, and then get it reimbursed back into it.
Right, and that makes, that makes a lot of sense. Um, and it's, this is, again, I mean, we've talked about this a lot, a very exciting project, and, um, very soon, the, uh, the appraisals will be going out.
This week.
To, this week, the appraisals will be going out, some appraisals, um, with others to follow, to the residents, and, um, hopefully, they will, um, be of good value to the, to the residents.
Hopefully be acceptable to everybody, and we can move forward.
Right. Any questions or comments on this?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering the establishment of an intermunicipal airport master plan task force.
Whereas in 2024, Westchester County is preparing to complete its community engagement program to finalize the master plan supplement for the Westchester County. Excuse me. For the Westchester County Airport, and whereas through the, although the airport terminal use regulations remain in effect, the terminal use agreement with the airlines are set to expire by the end of 2024, and whereas the Rybrook Airport Advisory Council has established an intermunicipal task, has advised establishing an intermunicipal airport master plan task force to collectively review and comment on any impact of the proposed master plan supplement, and who could advise on any issues or concerns regarding the expiration and renewal of the TCA. And whereas the goals of the proposed intermunicipal task force would be for it to include up to two residents selected by each of the local officials and municipalities in close proximity to the airport, who would root, would one, review the airport master plan supplement to seek a draft position paper, and seek to draft a position paper endorsed by the various municipal elected boards to present at the county as part of a public community engagement program on the supplement, and two, to advise on any issues or concerns regarding the expiration and renewal of the TUA. And whereas the proposed task force would have a limited duration that would end once the county adopts the master plan supplement and the TUA is renewed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the establishment of an airport master plan task force, and be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to reach out to municipalities in close proximity to the airport to ask them to appoint up to two members of their community to serve on this intermunicipal airport master plan task force.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have long said that I believe that the airport has no greater, has, that there's no other community that the airport has a greater effect on than the Village of Rybrook.
Mm-hmm.
That we are directly in the flight, flight path for the airport. Part of the airport is in the Village of Rybrook, and everything flows downstream from the airport into Rybrook, and we have houses within a quarter mile of the runway. I think that we have a very vested interest in what happens at Westchester County Airport, and I want to thank everyone who's been involved with our own task force and on the county's task force regarding the, the airport, including Peter Schlaktis and stuff, Trustee Fisher, for going to those meetings. And, um, it was recommended to us that we revive this group.
The, yeah, this was something, um, we went to their, our airport advisory council, and, uh, what we, there was a discussion at that, it was a very healthy, it was a really good discussion. Um, I attended the meeting as well, and basically, there was a question of, we know that we're impacted, but it's best if we can get more support from others as well. And, but let's face it, we're gonna have more interest than a lot of others. So the thought process was, if we could maybe talk to our neighbors, and some of them have concerns about the airport, the goal and the hope is that other communities are, the elected bodies from the other neighboring communities to the airport would have similar interest to at least appoint one or two people to a task force of a very limited duration. Very specific task about the master plan, about the TUA, these are big things that could happen for the long term. This is something that, by working together, we think we could, um, collectively have a better voice if there was more people involved than just Rybrook. So this task force would be an intermunicipal one with others in proximity, you know, we think that like Newcastle, Greenwich.
Harrison.
Harrison, Bamarinac, um, sorry, Rice City, Portchester.
Portchester.
They, they are, they're in the flight path. They have issues there.
Absolutely.
So, um, they also have issues on stormwater and things like that. So, these are things that we think that, you know, the goal here would be for the mayor and I to be able to reach out to those communities and try to ask, and ask their boards to appoint one or two members for a limited duration for a very specific task, and then collectively come up with one voice as a group.
Right, and, and, you know, while we are greatly affected, we are, as Chris said, we're not the only ones affected.
Nope.
And so, you know, this is an opportunity for municipalities to work collectively to review this plan, and like Chris said, come with one voice.
I have a personal request. Third paragraph, first line, last word.
Establishing.
Last word, first line, third paragraph.
Third paragraph, last line.
First line, last word.
Establishing.
Hey, you got it.
Can we change in to from?
Yep.
Because it sounds as if the residents have to be in close proximity to the airport, not.
Yep, absolutely.
Greenwich is also affected. Are they part of?
The thought, we talked about that. We thought that would be a good way, because Greenwich doesn't have much of a voice because they're not in the county, but they have a lot of interest and information. So the goal is, we would reach out to Greenwich as well.
Okay, okay, I want to make sure. But how does this differ from our, the current task force?
That's just Rybrook. This would be, this would be.
We, but our, our, we have a task force, but there you go, but I attend these meetings, but to my knowledge, Stephanie, nobody else attends the airport meetings from these other.
No.
Just because it's our, one of our boards. It's just like any other board or committee that we have.
Because I, I remember talking to, uh, somebody who lives in Pleasantville, and I know that they're on top of it as well because it affects them.
Which one did he bring?
They may have different issues. They wouldn't have like stormwater issues, but maybe they have flight, they may have flight, flight path issues.
Right, exactly.
Like our monk.
Exactly, okay.
The county does have a board that meets once a month.
Right, doesn't Peter Schlaktis go to that?
He's on both.
That, but that's a different, that's from, that's like.
That's a county board selected by the county.
We want to make sure, right, so would Peter be willing to?
I'm sure he would.
My recommendation would be that the board consider two members from our, our current airport advisory board serving the task force.
Right, because they're aware of what's happening.
We'll be first trying, well, this, this is the establishment of the task force.
Yep, and then the mayor and I will reach out.
And then we have to populate it, so that'll be the next step. So we'll be looking internally, who will be representing Rybrook, and then we'll be looking at the other municipalities, asking them to send representatives to likewise populate the task force.
And they may not be interested, but we certainly are hoping they will be, because there's an impact here. Yep.
Right, like, I feel like we've asked Portchester for involvement before, and they've just had, like, other, they've just been busy.
They have, but you know what? In the past, they talked about forming their own airport groups. But that's why the thought process was a limited duration. A task force tends to have limited duration and very issue-driven.
Yeah.
Right, focus specifically on the, the, the terminal use agreement and the master plan.
So the master plan process, we don't know when it's gonna pick up again, but it will be this year.
Be fast.
And the TUA, um, so the TUA, there's two different issues the board should be aware of. There's terminal use restrictions, and there's terminal use, uh, agreement. The terminal use agreement defines things like the, the 240 passengers per half hour, and the four gates, the maximum number of gates, and so forth. The county at one point in time, a number of years ago, and that's a very important grandfather agreement.
It's the only one.
That's the one that's expired in the end of the year. However, the board, the county, a number of years ago, adopted by legislation, those things in the agreement into their legislation, and that's called the terminal use, uh, restrictions. So those mirror a lot of ways, the, the number of gates and the passengers. Which one would supersede the other, whether or not, and the concern is, if it's not maintained in the terminal use agreement, that would allow the airlines to challenge the county law.
Which would allow the FAA to set limits instead of.
And lose the grandfather clause.
That is critical.
Critical.
Yes, that's why we're.
And if you remember, that was, that was why we had, there were, there were a series of hearings on this issue years ago, including one, more than one, here in this room.
I remember.
And we had, we had members of the community and members of our boards go to meetings throughout the county on that.
I went to the one, I spoke, I spoke on behalf of the village at, during the master plan process at Manhattanville College.
Yes, I went to that one also, I think.
Yes.
Somebody else went to the county center, I think, back then, too. There was another one there.
I was at a few of them, but I can't remember where I was.
I don't think I went to the county center one.
I think we were, we were, we had representatives at every, every one of the sessions.
All right, any other questions or comments on the establishment of this task force?
No, I'm all for it.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you, and now we'll get to work on populating it.
Yes.
All right, uh, resolution number seven, considering the appointment of a chair of the traffic commission.
Okay, now therefore be resolved that Michael Barnett of 158 Countryers Drive, Rybrook, New York, is hereby appointed as chair of the Rybrook Traffic Commission.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
I'm moved. Second.
153 or 158?
Yes.
Which one?
Yeah, it says one in the backup material and one on the, uh.
We'll, we'll correct it one way or the other.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm usually not that, it's just that I wanted to know where he lives.
It's on our board list upstairs.
Good question. Wait a minute, all right. Well, we, we thank Mr. Barnett for his service, continued service on the committee, because he's been on the traffic commission, but also, um, now stepping up as chair.
And thank Mr. Applebaum.
And yes, and we thank Mr. Applebaum for his long service.
1996, he's served on that commission.
A long time.
Wow.
Crazy, right?
I think Tina Blank was the chair then.
So nearly 30 years.
Is he the longest one, I wonder?
I mean, has to be, right?
So we thank Mr. Applebaum for nearly 30 years of service.
He's been chair for, since 2000.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Tina was the chair then.
Nearly 30 years of service on that commission, and for everything he's done for the Village of Rybrook, and we wish him, we wish him well.
And he is having some health issues, so I definitely want to just wish him the best as he deals with that as well.
Of course you did. I sent him one from everybody, too. Thank you.
But, uh, trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on August 15th, 2023.
May therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on August 15th, 2023.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, administrators' report.
Okay, I just have really one item, um, which is just to give an update on the NRCS program. So, we, as the mayor said earlier, we have 22 eligible properties. Um, the appraisals were done in November. The, uh, all the appraisers are currently, all the appraisals are currently in and pending NRCS review approval, and we've received six, uh, that are approved to be released so far. So those will be going out tomorrow.
Wow.
The mayor signed the cover letter tonight, and, uh, we'll have the appraisals going out tomorrow, and then residents will have 45 days from the date of the letter to be able to, uh, respond to whether or not they're interested in going to the next step.
Okay.
Yeah.
So very exciting. Numbers look strong, and, and I, I believe, but we'll find out, you know, how people react to it when they receive them.
Great, okay.
Yeah. And we're also, since the appraisals have been submitted, we're also actively, we need to get that account set up so we can get reimbursed right away.
Right.
That's all I have for tonight.
Oh, wonderful.
Short one tonight.
All right, so moving on to a discussion item that I'm very upset to see. Discussion item, uh, number one, an energy audit update.
So, you know, we, this is something I know that the mayor and the board were interested in, in looking to see if we could do an energy study, and, um, so we've been reaching out with the group INF, who's doing the work with the county, and, uh, they said they do energy studies, so we just tried to get proposals from them. And to be honest, you know, looking at the proposals, we got proposals for the highway garage, uh, village hall, the senior center, the firehouse, and the prices, I thought, were just very, very high, you know, 26,000, that's for, yeah, 26,800. Uh, just the village hall would be 14,800. Um, we started looking at that. If you can do anything, you know, we'd suggest looking at that one, but I, in good conscience, we don't recommend, you know, given, we think we're doing a pretty good job, not, I'm sure we could do more, but our highway garage is pretty much brand new. You know, the, uh, senior center, Michael's done a lot of work and upgraded a lot of the, uh, a lot of our infrastructure there. Um, firehouse is, is a big building. It'd be a very, that's an expensive one, and village hall, you know, does get a lot of usage. So if you can do anything, it would be village hall, but I just thought recovering the 14,800 would be, that would be a lot to recover again, and take a number of years, I would think. But if the board really wants you to proceed, we could. That's the proposal we have. We could also get other prices if we wanted. These are things that used to be done for free by the utility companies.
Yeah, but why aren't they doing it for us?
The utility companies aren't doing it anymore. Yeah, NYSERDA, yeah, others, they just, they just said no.
I saw. You think I'm nitpicking, huh?
No, we think it'd be great.
He does.
Yeah, I agree.
We think it'd be great, but not at 14,800 dollars.
Yeah, and to me, I, to me, I guess I wasn't thinking necessarily about the, about recovering the cost as much as making, you know, trying to do as much as we possibly can.
I think about recovering costs.
I know you do, and that, and that's why we have a clean audit every year, and that's why we're doing so well financially as a village.
But I also think, you know, Michael Nowak does a great job when he's replacing equipment, trying to balance cost with, uh, better energy efficiencies. We've changed the lighting in the building. We've done, we have, you know, we do have shut offs in the building and follow the lighting. You know, could we do more? 100%, I'm sure we could, but.
Right.
Is it, is it worth the investment at this point in time? You know, that's something that I leave up to the policymakers.
All right, fine.
Yeah, so we put this as a discussion.
Comments, I had asked for this one.
Well, I, I think the idea of an energy audit is a very lovely idea in theory, but if there is no economic recovery from it, we're basically just wasting our time then.
Well, not time, money.
Well, wasting our money and our time.
Okay, so do we have, okay, so I understand you want to find out if there's ways we can reduce our costs. Is that the whole point of an energy audit?
Not necessarily costs. Um, our energy usage, our waste, our, yeah.
So we, so I guess the one thing, we, we don't need an audit company to tell us to change everything to LED bulbs. We don't need to know to turn down thermostats at night. I know that in my house, I keep it cold. To save, that is, and every, for the, Con Edison would tell you immediately, you reduce your cost substantially for every degree that you reduce it. Are we doing these things, the simple things that we know we should be using? Are we turning off monitors at night? Are we turning off our computers? Things like that. Is that really what the, the whole goal?
I think also, I think we're, you know, also insulation and whether we're getting leak from the buildings.
Sometimes they'll say, you know, there's what, boilers that have timers and other systems downstairs that they do, they recommend, but unless you're upgrading them, you're not gonna be doing some of those, some of that work.
I must tell you, I'm nitpicky, right? I must tell you.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
I'm not being nitpicky.
I'm not being nitpicky, I'm just.
Before you speak, I must tell you, I looked at my last bill, which I just received two days ago. 67% of my bill was delivery charges, not usage. So therefore, I could make all sorts of time and money-saving accommodations, but I can only affect 33% of my bill. 67% is.
So let's take that one step further. Of that 33%, the village's rate is, is much cheaper than your 33%, so we're probably at 15%.
We have NIPA.
Hypothetical numbers, but our fuel rates from Con Edison versus our electricity rates from NIPA are even lower than what the public is paying, so our rates are much lower. So to recoup that $14,000.
What takes longer?
That's 10, 12 years' worth of fuel necessarily to recuperate, and that might be exaggerating, but in all fairness, let's, let's take a step back at the village hall. All our thermostats are day-night setback thermostats. Done. All our lights in the building are LED. Done. Our boiler is 97% efficient, lock and varts, 10 to 1, um, turn-down ratio. AJP has the same system, 10 to 1 turn-down ratio, 98% efficient. Air handlers were replaced six years ago. Those we weren't able to do as efficient, but we went slightly better than contractor grade, so unless you want to shell out $250,000 to recoup $14,000, I'll, I'll gamble, but, you know. So, you know, how much more can we do? Yes, there's places to look at, maybe windows, maybe doors, things like that. Are there additional controls that we could throw into a building to automate the HVAC system? You're running into now messing around with the culture in the building. And what do I mean by culture? For 10 years prior to me coming here, I worked with a mechanical engineering firm, so I designed heating, plumbing, air conditioning systems. Culture is the environment that people work in, and that one or two degrees cost savings makes a big, big difference, uh, in the workplace. Certain people don't like it cold, certain people love it freezing, certain people can't find a happy medium, so you start to disrupt some of that in the workplace to save two degrees on a thermostat. It's doable, don't get me wrong. I mean, you as a board tell us what to do, 100%, but just, you know, can we do things? Yes, but when we both, all three of us saw 826,000, we kind of laughed, like, what? And then when we saw 14,000, we.
We're surprised at that, too.
Because we were like, you know, um, so maybe we could look at other proposals, maybe from other companies and see, maybe we could get something a little more reasonable than 14,000.
There, there's also the cameras, where they look to see if you have, um, heat.
Infrared.
Right, infrared cameras. That could be as simple as that.
Yeah.
We have it?
We do.
Well, why don't we employ it?
Ooh, can I borrow it?
Can I borrow it?
I'm sorry, but that's not possible.
Yeah, that's not really.
Not allowed.
Not for personal use.
Right. So, well, I won't ask you to keep village hall at the temperature David keeps his house at.
My house is probably warmer than Susan's.
Mine is very cold.
Okay, well, I won't.
You should, anyone that's worked in an office, I'm sure is familiar with the arguments about too hot, too cold.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
We're no different.
I'm so hot right now.
Space heaters are dangerous.
We could explore another RFP.
Yeah, I mean, listen, it is a comprehensive, we, we have had energy audits of our buildings, but it was like 20 years ago. So it's, you know, it would've been great to do it again, but do we want to put the cost into it right now?
Right.
No, especially since we have effected wonderful change for cost savings. The truth is that costs have increased so exponentially, even if you get a great rate.
I mean, listen, it's just as easy to turn around an RFP. It doesn't work. I mean, online, so it's not, it's, it's, I mean, a couple hours worth of work, just to update and send it out, so.
Yeah.
Look, let's see what happens. It can't hurt. If we get a more reasonable number, then we could bring it back.
All right, if you want updated, send it out, that's fine.
Because we were hoping village hall wouldn't come in at that price. When, when we saw the big price, we were like, well, how about we focus on village hall, because also we're 24/7 and downstairs, and so it made sense, but.
Right.
We were surprised when we saw 14,800.
Yeah. All right, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any questions or comments from the public?
I should mention, too, all the projects at AJP now are currently done. We have another one coming up starting, but like the walkways and the, uh, the boiler, right, is.
Boiler's done.
Boiler's done, the walkway's done.
Walkway's done. We got finals by tomorrow. Um, HVAC upgrades, we're exploring additional money from state.
We've requested more money from CDBG.
And that'll be a little bit more efficient than what's there.
Mm-hmm, and the walkways, and the walkways all done with new lighting, new, new roof, roof on it, everything.
Wonderful.
And I did see that, um, we got the, uh, money from the grant.
We got two more grants, yeah.
So congratulations. I do keep my eye on it. I meant to send you a text, but I also saw that we lost one because we did not, um.
Well, that's, that's, that was really because we don't, that's because it's, we don't, the right of way doesn't extend far enough, so it's.
Right.
And we can't do it, we can't apply these funds to private property.
And that's one that we really want.
We're gonna regroup on that one and have, maybe just, we'll do a design grant to see what options we can work with.
Okay.
But we couldn't do it with, uh, construction, because you're not allowed to do it on private property.
Got it. Right, I'm just letting you know.
We don't give up on it, we just take a step back and regroup.
So I pay attention. I'm just letting you know, thank you.
Actually, the other one on Avon is a really, that's really good, because then, now we're able to do that benefit cost ratio and have somebody really try to force that down so that we can get the money that is available, but you need to show them one to one.
That we've already been.
Exactly, that would be a huge win if that, if that works out.
That would be huge for everyone downstream of that.
No contributions on either one of those. Those are 100% paid for. By the way, no contributions on either one of those, those are a hundred percent paid for, so.
You have very nice papers.
Yeah.
I, I have crappier papers than that.
All right, see no comments, uh, the next meetings of the Board of Trustees are January twenty-fourth, eh.
Twenty-third.
Sorry, you're right, twenty-third, that's two weeks, Tuesday the ninth, January twenty-third, and I'm going to guess that the thirteenth is correct, I didn't look.
It is, right.
All right, February thirteenth.
The second and fourth, uh, of each month.
The second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, except for August and December, uh, and so.
Last year was on Valentine's Day, this year it's not.
Yeah, that's right, it's not, all right, and, uh, thank you all, and have a good night.
You too.
Everyone, please stay safe tonight.
Right.
Stay safe tonight.